Good evening, welcome to the September 20th, 2016 Planning Board Meeting. I have to announce we are recording this for the purpose of minutes. LCAD is also recording this and I have to ask if anyone in the audience is. Seeing no one, jump up and wave. We will jump right in. We have a 6:00 PM Public Hearing Site Plan Review, CDB Realty, 280 North Main Street. Ted, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. The Planning Board will hold a public hearing on September 20th, 2016 at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall Meeting Room, 60 Center Square on application for site plan review filed by CDB Realty LLC to install a carport canopy with solar panels on property located at 280 North Main Street. Information related to this application is on file with the Planning Board and available for public, for review by the public.
Okay. At this time, is there more?
No.
Okay. This time I'd ask you to come up, give us a little explanation of what you want to do. Discussion amongst the board will open it to the public. Here?
My name is Jeff Weber with Green Earth Energy. We are working with Chris and his property, doing solar on the roof of his property now, and then this is the final phase of that project. And essentially, it's just, you know, a engineered concrete and steel structure, canopy with a roof, that can or cannot accept solar panels. So it could be just a carport for safety reasons or, you know, convenience for his clients, but because we can attach panels to it and tie it into a system, we're going to utilize it to maximize his potential at his property to cover essentially 100% of the electrical load that he now is consuming. This is a smaller project. We have multiple carport projects in the works as we speak that we're working on, and this is just going to cover seven or eight parking, maybe nine parking spots, I believe. And we're just going to run some conduit underground and tie it into the current system that we're installing on the roof to make it 100K system. And that's really it. We have three engineers working on this, between Pete Lavoy, who did the site plan, and Leon Bombardier, who did the original carport design, to Mayberry Material. John Mayberry and his team are doing the final engineering design for his particular, for Chris's particular project. We expect, at the point where if we can get to pulling permits, that the project will probably consist of no more than two weeks to get everything installed and connected.
Okay. It looks like you're right up close to the road, what, two parking spots in?
Yes, I believe we're 31 feet from the front yard. And, you know, obviously, we're flexible on that. We would like to keep it as close to the front as possible for those clients and guests coming in.
And this actually includes the panels that are already installed on the roof?
Correct. The rendering that I, you know, sent in with the application is just a, kind of like a, just basically a rendering of, you know, what it would-
Right, but because this is a site plan, and the rooftop-
Which one are you looking at?
The rooftop panels are already there-
Yep.
Are also part of the site plan.
Yes.
Okay, so this covers both of them?
Because that's in allowed use. The building is already there-
Okay.
And any rooftop solar is, is just a stripped building permit. And the only thing that's applicable here is the addition of the structure of the parking spaces that are already existing.
I seem to recall, for Walgreens, they came in for-
A waiver.
A waiver, okay.
And I think the waiver, wasn't it, they had a unit attached to the building or something?
Okay.
And the angle of these solar panels is going to be projected towards the reminder building, not away from?
Right, so if you look at the property from satellite with north, south, east, west, the buildings here, the proposed parking, yeah, this is essentially south. So we're going to pitch this, the rooftop of this particular carport, just a few degrees.
And in towards the parking lot or way-
Yeah, well, it's, we want to, we don't want to face it north-
Sure.
Then it's facing away from the sun.
Yeah, absolutely.
So it's going to face the-
It's going to face the reminder building, so it would not be any obstruction or any issues with any other buildings adjacent to it.
Correct, yeah, it's going to-
And it's a very slight pitch, you know?
Yep.
People have asked me why we don't have more pitch.
Most people, unless you're coming in in a lot, you know, high truck, are, no one even sees the top of this, for the most part. Unless you're going from a distance back this way.
I did get an inquiry from someone who has a building north of you about whether or not this is going to reflect, any of this would reflect on his building, and you're facing south, so it's not going to-
No, and by code and by just the industry changing and always adapting and evolving, these panels themselves have a very minor reflection rate.
They're trying to soak the-
Understood, the less reflection, the better, you get more-
Right, yeah. So, even if they were facing, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be any reflection.
I've heard that, until you drive by them and you see the reflection.
They could be older ones, yeah.
And a lot of times, it's the framework or something other than the panel.
Sometimes the frames are the metal ones that are-
What's the actual height going to be?
Height of the lowest portion where it's angled towards the building is going to be nine feet, eight inches up. So about a foot higher, or a foot and a few inches higher than most parking garages where they have that beam coming across, it's like eight feet, six, eight feet, six inches up. This is nine feet, eight inches from ground to the bottom of the eve of the lowest point.
And the columns that are holding it, are you looking to try and space those so that they fall right on the lines?
Yes, yep, we're not going to, we're going to try not to eliminate any parking whatsoever. And again, that's just a rendering, it's a rudimentary rendering. The actual structure, the columns are seven, the concrete posts are seven feet in length, four feet into the ground. And then, you know, all rebarred, and then three feet coming up, and then the steel attaches, the steel structure attaches to that, so that rendering doesn't really reflect that, nor the-
Right.
The drawing here does.
And that's going to actually be created by Mayberry Material Handling right here in town?
Mayberry's doing the final engineering, the final scope of, you know, all the little tiddly bits, all little corners and pieces and engineering. Yeah, they're doing the final-
I was wondering what those parts were called. Tiddly bits.
Tiddly bits.
It's a technical term. I had to go to college for that one.
No, we're all fresh out of tiddly bits today.
Sorry. Get her to order some more. But Mayberry's procuring the metal, galvanizing the metal, and, you know, because we, of course, did business with them as well, we're the company that did their solar system. It's all good family now.
Is there any height change? I'm trying to remember the reminder building. Do you drop down and in as you come in off of North Main Street?
The land drops down and in, but the building, we, my brother and I put an addition on in 2004, and that's maybe a foot higher than the original building?
Okay. No, I was just thinking, as you came in the parking lot, if the parking lot drops down-
It does slow down a little bit.
Are you going to end up with the whole roof visible from North Main Street?
Well, I think-
We'll go with the carport as the-
I think I'm thinking of the building next to you.
Your slope is probably starting over here.
Go with the land.
A little gradual, but yeah.
No, the title of the carport will stay horizontal to the horizon.
Maybe four feet of it will change on the whole.
Right, so-
Is it Hamden East that I'm thinking of?
Yes, that is significant drop in elevation.
This end is when you're-
Sorry, talking three feet of elevation.
Sorry.
Sorry about that, like, I think it was the building next to you that I'm thinking of, Hamden East that has the-
I think it drops down farther in the parking lot, correct me if I'm wrong. When you go farther, parking lot drops down.
But we're going to try and keep it even with the worst line of the building for a set. We don't want, we drive by and there's a building that has a nice square look to it, and then you see a carport that's, you know, going down, slow. We're going to keep it just like all the buildings on the street.
As soon as we can accessory structure.
Yeah.
That's what we've already taken that in.
Yeah. Any other thoughts from the board?
No, no issue.
Before I open it up to the public? Okay. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Hi, I'm Chris Buendo, one of the owners of the reminder office building, and we think it's a great idea to go solar and go green and do it with a local company like Green Earth Energy, and utilizing Mayberry Material Handling to help us with the creation of this. We hope the board sees favorably and allows us to move forward.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the board. Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I will second that.
Is there any further discussion before we close it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to approve the site plan as submitted?
I will second it.
Any further discussion? I would just add, the site plan is for the carport with the solar panels on it and doesn't include the other areas. And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? You guys are all set.
Thank you.
May I pose a question?
Yes.
Is there an appeals period?
No.
So I can pull permits tomorrow?
Well, as soon as I give the decision.
Okay, so-
So I have to write the decision. I try and do it the next day, but sometimes it's-
Take your time.
I'm not sure what my schedule's-
We're still procuring the metal.
My schedule's pretty tight tomorrow, so it'll probably be Friday.
No problem. I'll come in next, maybe next month, appreciate it.
Oh, it'll be done by then.
Done by then, okay.
Do you have a number and I can-
Yeah, I can give you my card.
Yeah, and we can call you when it's ready. But, okay.
Thank you very much.
Donna will be calling.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
Let's jump into new business. We have a request for waiver of site plan review, East Long Meadow-Sinoco, 204 North Main Street. It's listed as a change of name.
Request for waiver of site plan review, property owner is NEC OPCO, Inc. Owner's address is 326 Clark Street, Worcester, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here, name of proposed business is East Long Meadows-Sinoco, number 04052. Owner of business is NEC OPCO, Inc. Business owner's address is 326 Clark Street, Worcester, Mass. Property address is 204 North Main Street. Property district is business, allowed use is yes, proposed hours of operation are Sunday through Saturday, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Number of employees, including the owner, is 10. Summary of business is gas station, C-store with exterior tunnel car wash already existing, bring, being purchased in a asset sale, all existing structures and businesses remaining the same. Number of commercial vehicles is zero, amount of storage is up to 330,000 gallons of fuel. The application's been signed and dated August 5th, 2016. This is four corners, CVS?
I'm sorry.
Four corners, CVS?
Yes.
Okay. Is it changing it to new company?
Yes.
So it's not going to be FL Roberts anymore?
No.
No. Right now, gas station with the convenience store is under special permit, correct? But this one's not.
There's no convenience store.
There's no, there's no store? Well, there is a store, but it's a walk-up only with a sliding window.
Yeah, it's actually listed as a convenience store on there.
Really?
Yeah.
That is odd.
Because of our rules or because they did it?
No, they, that's the-
Was it six by six, eight by eight?
That might be an error by them, though.
But they're selling stuff, so hence-
They're selling cigarettes, basically.
Yeah.
Lottery.
Retail, instead of just a gas station.
Okay.
And I know we recently, two meetings ago, had a discussion with regards to Subway, and with a change of ownership, do we bring them under a special permit, or don't we? I think with Subway, the thought was that the actual ownership of the main corporation isn't changing. In this instance, the ownership's completely changing. So my question to the board is, at this time, do you bring this under a special permit? There are licenses, from what I understand, they have to have in-ground fuel tank license, storage, and the licenses all have to change because of new ownership.
Good question.
Personally, I would say no, it seems like a lot for a very tiny store, but I know rules are rules, but it does seem like a lot.
Gas station, store-
Yep.
Car wash.
Car wash.
Yep.
Yeah, it's a large parcel.
Yeah, if you take the store alone-
Extremely busy parcel.
Store alone, maybe, but the whole site, yeah. Because they just did, they added on to the car wash, too, did they not?
Yes.
Yeah, they did. They enclosed a section of it. It was still being used as an entry-in where they did the pre-cleaning and all, and what we approved is an enclosure for it.
And for the cashier at that entrance for the car wash.
Although maybe it would be used to have them in.
I would agree.
Yeah, I would think this would be appropriate.
Being all the entities, the different parties, or parcels.
So they're asking for a waiver of site plan. Would it be the board's interest to turn that down and have them come in under a special permit?
I think so.
I would agree with that.
Yeah, and take no action?
Yeah, I agree.
Would it be take no action on the waiver and tell them that the waiver's inappropriate, that they'll need-
I would, I would say you need to deny the waiver in, if you want, if you're going the special permit way, to require a special permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver of site plan.
There's been a motion made to approve the waiver of site plan.
I'll second that.
Wait, 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 let me think for a minute.
Yeah, he's going back.
You don't mean approve the waiver?
Yes, he does.
Yes, I'm making the-
In the negative.
I'm making the motion in the affirmative.
The motion's been made in the affirmative. If we choose to deny it and put it under special permit, we can do that.
Oh, okay. So that we vote no?
Tonight.
Okay, gotcha.
So having a motion made-
Michael, and seconded.
And seconded in the affirmative to approve the waiver. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have a request for waive of site plan review, Accurate Real Estate Appraisals, Inc., 2 Athens Street.
Request for waiver of site plan, property owner is Christopher Bertelli. Owner's address is 2 Athens Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here, name of proposed business is Accurate Real Estate Appraisals, Inc. Owner of business is Christopher Bertelli. Business owner's address is 2 Athens Street, East Long Meadow, property address is 2 Athens Street, East Long Meadow. Property district is residency, allowed use is not been checked. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Number of employees, including owner, is one. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. Summary of business, Accurate Real Estate Appraisals is a residential real estate company which completes appraisals on one to four unit dwellings in vacant land. I have no walking clients, no employees, I drive to the properties using my personal car, no commercial vehicles will be on site in which an appraisal is needed and complete the appraisal reports from home. Residence is used for home office, computer, and phone. The addresses, or the application's been signed and dated September 9th, 2016.
Sounds like a home office.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Request for signage, Kelly Fredette.
I'll overlook myself on this.
Me, too. What can I say?
You're going to have to leave.
Well, of course.
I do, I do a lot of business, spend a lot of money there.
Well, you know you need to state why you-
Well, that is why. I conduct business there.
What do we have?
Town of East Long Meadow, signed application dated September 15th, 2016. Business name is Kelly Fredette Lumber, 587 North Main Street, East Long Meadow. Business owner's name and address is David Weeks, 1258 Williams Street, Long Meadow. Property owner's name and address is the same, telephone numbers are listed here, nearest intersection is North Main and DeSalle's Avenue. Square footage proposed sign is 16, double-faced, freestanding, yes, attached to the building, no. If freestanding, height above the ground is 48 inches, temporary sign is 24 by 48 A-frame. Projection, if any, is non-applicable. The proposed sign is temporary, number of days will be for 90. Total number of existing signs is non-applicable, total square footage existing signs is non-applicable. Application's been signed, and the estimated cost is $200.
And is there a picture?
Let's see, is there a picture? Ooh, there is.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Is that 40, total of 48 inches? That's a huge sandwich sign.
24 by 48?
Press, I didn't think they came that big.
It's not going to be that tall when it's spread out.
Yeah, the request is for 90 days. Robin, that's a typical maximum that we usually do, isn't it?
No, you usually do 30 for temporary banners.
I was just thinking, direct department, when they requested for the signs out front. I thought we had done a 90-day period.
I would have to go back and look at that. I'm not sure.
Is anyone concerned as far as length or anything?
I'm not concerned in that-
I think it's great that it was brought in front of us.
Yes.
So many businesses just put them out.
And I think in that district, that's not going to be detrimental. I mean, it's North Main Street, it's, you know, retail, they've got a parking lot, you-
Do you want to leave it at 90, or ask the applicant if they want to change it to 30?
I would leave it at 90.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion made and seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You guys can come back. We have A&R on Brayburn Road. Is this the A&R?
Yes. This is difficult to read into the record. Ralph, you looked at it before, do you want to explain what happened?
I did.
Okay. You don't have to read it.
Tell if you want. They're believe, the Jelenas property, which is lot number four, they're sectioning off a parcel A, which is this parcel, it's like a small wedge-shaped piece in the middle, and that's being transferred to Ferrantino. It's one where, as soon as the parcel's split, it will become part of parcel three, the Ferrantinos. So you can see the existing lot line is the dash line, and then they've moved it over. They've compensated for the house so that the house still remains 12 and a half feet away from the property line, so the setbacks are still legal.
And they're, they're keeping the same frontage? Frontage is the same?
The frontage will change by 4.36 feet.
Oh, okay.
Because that's the width of it.
But they both still meet the criteria. The basic with the drone is move it, move the shed.
But the shed still has to be moved, and in the plan, it states that.
In the notes?
Yeah.
Shed to be relocated to conform to-
Shed relocated to conform to current zoning regulations is maybe required.
I, it's-
I don't see any problem with it.
Use all the garbage.
Yeah.
It's-
It's perfectly legal.
Kind of a weird thing to do.
Cut a piece of property off to sell it to your neighbor.
Very expensive shed.
You know, maybe perfectly legal, but it's kind of like you're tail wagging the dog here. I mean-
If that's what they want to do, it's illegal for them to do it.
I mean, if it's legal, it is what it is, but-
I guess it's better than fighting neighbors.
Make a motion-
They're doing it the right way.
Make a motion to endorse the A&R.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Robin, sign those afterwards.
Yeah, just don't forget.
Yeah, we'll do it right at the end.
Yep.
Okay.
We have a request for waiver of site plan, tree 413.
Yeah, I really do think I should accuse myself of this.
Okay. Can a few more come to the board?
Thank you. The property owner is Seven Road Station LLC. The owner's address is 7 Mosher Street, West Springfield. The telephone numbers are given, name of the proposed business is tree 413. The owner of the business is Joseph Alexopoulos. The business owner's address is 1200 Converse Street. I assume that that is either Springfield or Long Meadow.
It's Long Meadow.
Okay.
Long Meadow.
Property address is Maple Court. Property district is industrial. Allowed use is asserted to be yes. Proposed hours of operation, seven to five, number of employees, including the owner, seven. Date of last parking plan, not applicable. Summary of business, operation, vehicle storage, equipment storage, material storage, trucks, loaders, lumber. Number of commercial vehicles, seven, amount of product storage, 100 cords. And signed by Jay LaFevre.
What was the actual address of it? Thought you said Maple Court.
That's all it says, is Maple Court.
Property address, Maple Court. If I remember right, on the last-
There's an entrance off of Maple Court. It's actual address, 64 Maple Street.
Because I think the last time-
Say, where do we end up at?
Long Meadow, or Long Meadow Landscape had come in, and they redid their site plan review waiver, so that it said Maple Street, if I remember right, because there was no actual address on Maple Court.
Okay.
Is that one parcel?
No, it's several parcels.
That's kind of what I thought. I just remember going back and forth for this, the last time, I don't remember what board arrived after.
Well, as I called, last time, we thought we were permitting a landscaping business. Given the operations that are there right now with the large amount of tree trunks, not lumber, but tree trunks, and the large amount of mulch that's still there, there's still a big pile of chipping, tree chippings. I would be reluctant to do this without a site plan, that would specify more closely what's going to be stored where and how it's going to be stored and all that kind of thing, because we've had promises from these people and have not been fulfilled.
I would tend to agree with that, and reading the letters from some of the other fire department, for one, in town-
And health department.
And their requests.
Mm-hmm.
I would agree.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver in proper format.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the waiver, say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
And what is the decision?
We have denied the waiver of site plan, that they will need a full site plan.
Full site plan.
Administrative issues.
I have a couple of other St. Mark's da-da-da. The sign.
Okay.
Application.
Sign permit application dated September 15th. Business name and address is St. Mark's Church, 1 Porter Road. Property owner's name and address is St. Mary's Church, oh, excuse me, Mark's Church. Phone numbers are listed here, nearest intersection is Maple Shade and Porter. Square footage area proposed sign is three square feet, it is double-faced. It is double-faced. Uh, eighteen by twenty-four inches. Freestanding, yes. Attached to the building, no. Height above the ground is sixteen inches. Non-projection from the building. Uh, setback to the property line is ten feet. Distance to nearest side yard is ten feet. Uh, the sign is temporary, uh, it'll be installed for seven days. Total number of existing signs is non-applicable. The application has been signed and there's no estimated cost.
So are they looking for a single sign? For the church or are they?
They're looking for as many as you'll give them. That's my color rendering that was.
I mean, it's over this weekend anyways.
I'll make a mo- motion to approve it through September twenty-fifth.
I'll second it.
What is it?
The sign.
One sign. On their property.
On their property?
I mean, it, they're.
I think they're looking to put it all around town.
They're everywhere and they were along Pleasant Street, all the way up.
Well.
There was like thirty.
You understand, we're, we're dealing with a church here.
It, yeah, but that's not a religious.
Well, it could be, considering.
Yeah, no, you're talking about a black party, I mean.
I think the intention of the churches. What is the church?
It's a fundraiser.
It's a fundraiser for, for the, the church.
Just remember, we have more than one church, so.
And we have lots of churches that do this all the time.
And they're pretty respectful.
You know, it, it's fundraiser for the church and it's also recruiting for the church, let's face it.
You've been restrictive, though, where the signs can go. In the past.
Well, there's only been a motion made to prove one sign.
Once, that's what I'm saying, but one, because he will, he's asking for as many as you'll give him.
Being that I wasn't there in the past, what have we done before with the.
What is this, an application?
A banner.
Application.
What is this, an application?
A request for one sign?
Or signs.
Or signs.
He, he, it doesn't say, so I would read it as a request for one sign. Because he's only, he's only talking about one sign, which is eighteen by twenty-four inches.
All we can act on right now is what that application is.
It doesn't specify.
So it's for one sign? And, you know, if parishioners put them up on their front lawns, that's.
Yeah, that's different.
That's a free speech issue.
That's different.
Yeah.
If it's on individuals' property. The problem was is that it's been on town property.
Well, I understand that. The ones on town property were removed.
Well.
Well, right now, we have an application in front of us for one sign. I believe there's been a motion made, seconded. Any further discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And was there?
There's just one other thing, um, and I just heard about this from DPW today. And this is, um, Matt Campaneri. As you know, Winterberry Lane was approved, uh, and it was taken as a town street. And, um, Mr. Campaneri still has money left. And he's looking to have the money returned to him. And I just received that from DPW today for the final, for the full release. And I have the full release here for his bond money.
Okay, this is a memo to the Robin McDonald Planning Board and Conservation, September twentieth, twenty sixteen, from Dan Murphy, P E, Town Engineer, regarding Winterberry Lane Bond. Per your request, we've reviewed the Winterberry project and find that construction has been completed and all street trees are now in an acceptable condition. We recommend full release of the remaining construction bonding on the project. If you have any questions, feel free to contact this office.
Yeah, cause I think that was the only thing at the very end.
It was, that was it.
The condition of the trees, because they need to be in for at least a year.
A season, a growing season.
Make a motion to release the bond?
Second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just make three signatures, please?
Any three or?
No.
And there's something for Lighthouse Liquors changing parking plan?
Oh, yes, I received a complaint from one of the members of the Z B A that Lighthouse Liquors has now changed their parking and that apparently the parking goes like this.
That's correct.
So, they never came in for a new parking plan, um, when they redesigned their parking. I can't remember how many years ago, but it was a huge issue with the police department and safety issues. And, uh, requirements were made and now it looks like they've changed, so. I mean, I don't.
Well, all parking plans are supposed to be approved by the planning board.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and, and it's part of the site plan.
So, my suggest would be to send them a letter stating that, uh, their new parking, uh, was never approved by the planning board and they will need to come in with a full parking plan.
I'll have to be reviewed by the police department.
It needs, yeah, it needs to be approved. By the police department.
Now, do you want me to notify the, um, zoning enforcement officer?
Yeah, I want.
Yeah, Mark is doing some zoning. If it's specific, I mean, this is pretty specific.
Absolutely let him know that we will be sending them a letter with regards to this. And, I mean, if he has a problem with it, then they'll absolutely let us know. But just to keep them in the loop.
Right, okay. That's all I have other than the minutes.
Okay, I do have something under administrative. Lately, we have been receiving plans, um, at the last second, at meetings. I would like the board to take a vote. I think Friday at noon time, the plan should be submitted. That gives Robin and Donna a chance to email them, scan them and email them over to us so that we have a chance to review them before we're sitting here. I think anyone that comes in with plans at six o'clock, when we haven't even had a chance to look at them or drop them off on Monday and expect us to be able to review them, I, I just think is over the top. And, I mean, I would say, pretty much for any, anything that's gonna be put on the agenda for Tuesday, noon time Friday should be a deadline. And it should be pretty much.
At the bare minimum, that, I mean, that still only gives them a day and a half.
I mean, noon time Friday, for the most part.
That's basically what we try and stick to, but there are developers that, that come to the meetings that, on Tuesday and have new plans.
Make these for you.
All right, that sounds good.
Just think with a vote of the board that directs her that, that's it, we can't take anything else after that.
I, I would agree, and, um, if somebody does come in with new plans at the meeting, I think we just have to continue whatever it is to the next meeting.
Absolutely.
I mean, cause I, I haven't even seen them, so I can't compare them to the old plans.
They'll get them in earlier.
And I would love the luxury of having them PDF'd. So we all have them at our disposal to look at whenever we have time.
There is a requirement in our zoning bylaw that says when possible, a PDF file should be included with the plans.
It's not a requirement, it says when possible, though.
The only time you get a PDF is if, if I can get the scanner to work and I scan the plans.
Yeah, but it shouldn't be our responsibility.
It should be our responsibility.
They, they should bring in, in AutoCAD drawing and a PDF.
Well, the AutoCAD, I don't have AutoCAD on my.
Well, whatever, whatever form to bring it in, but it should be a PDF.
Hard copy, as long, hard copy, to keep on hand and a PDF.
Cause none of these guys are drawing this stuff by hand, you know that.
Every single person has a PDF.
I mean, every, every single person.
To a PDF.
Every developer can create a PDF without any problems, so. It shouldn't be our burden, just, you know.
That's all we work with, is PDFs for plans.
Yeah, I mean, and I've been scanning them, but the scanner is.
But if, if.
Some days it works, some days it's fuzzy.
They can email it to you. They've already got it electronically, they can email, make a PDF and email it to you.
Cause that was the only way it was printed.
Yeah.
That, that's easier for them, than to bring in the, the prints, which they have to do anyways, but that's even easier.
And the way they have to bring in six copies. You know, and it's.
Oh, so you wanna change that one?
No, I don't wanna change that.
No, 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 no.
Cause I was gonna say, the copies I need for the departments.
But I think if they send a PDF with it, it's easier for you, you don't have to run to the scanner, scan it and send it to us. You simply forward the PDF file that they want.
And then we, yeah, we have to pet it to make it work.
I, I, I won't make the motion to, um, not accept plans for a meeting after twelve noon on the previous Friday and to, uh, require where possible that the, the applicant submit the plan, a PDF of the plan along with the hard copies. I'm not gonna make that absolutely requirement because some people will come in with hand-drawn stuff occasionally. But, um, you know, in general.
None of our, um, the, everything requires a certified plan.
I understand that, but, but. We've, we've seen people come in with certified plans that are hand-drawn, okay? Some of the smaller engineering firms. I'm thinking of our friends in the north end of town there. Okay.
That's what I was too.
But, that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Um, do we wanna do just plans or are we stating that you can't submit?
He, he already said, said that.
No, no, I believe yours was plans.
Yeah, so let's, let's vote on that and put other agenda items.
Including a PDF, which is already required.
Yeah, we already, we already did that. So we have a motion on the table for plans to have to be in by Friday at noon time and a PDF when possible. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, now as far as, um.
Wait, 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 you said a PDF when possible, not when possible, a PDF.
That was the motion.
No, it was when possible.
Did you say when possible?
I did, because there are some smaller engineering firms that don't necessarily have the same capabilities that, you know, uh, Smith and Wesson, or not Smith and Wesson, but you know what I'm talking about, the, the big firms have, okay? There, there are a couple of engineers in town who do occasional things, okay? And they're perfectly capable of stamping them, but they're more likely to do, draft them by hand than they are to go through CAD, believe it or not.
We still, there's some people who still have gotten on them totally modern technology.
So what we're gonna try is basically anyone that's coming in and say, we'd like a PDF of this, uh, sent to us. And if they say they don't have the capabilities to do it.
Robin can waive it.
Right, okay. Okay, now with that, um, the other thing was anything submitted to the planning board. Um, as far as sign permits or, uh, waiver of site plans. I'd like those set up to where it's Friday at noon time in order to get onto our agenda. I mean, right now, I mean, it, it's always been that we try and do it by then, but.
Could we just word it as all new business?
I would, if it was, if it's something we know is made relatively routine, I would leave it to Robin's discretion.
Yeah.
Or not she wants to take it.
And that's what I try and do now.
I would, I would also feel comfortable with that.
But here's my whole thing is, it's supposed to go on the agenda forty-eight hours in advance for the open meeting law.
But I have a caveat at the end of the, and it says right here, and unless it's something that's really.
Controversial or anything and there's been a few that we brought up.
It, it's up to you, but I try because, you know, you get these people that.
I would trust your judgment, if it's a home office use and it's something that's allowed use.
Same works.
The permits have been filled out properly.
Yeah, this is it, I mean, he would've had to have waited another two weeks.
Right.
And it's. It's over.
And the timing would've been passed.
I'm not gonna do an open policy on that right now.
I mean, I try not to have anything that's gonna be controversial.
Okay, yeah, minutes.
I'll be, one other administrative thing, Robin, we talked about the, um, changes to the zoning bylaw.
Yes.
Have you heard from Jim Dutton or you yet on that?
Did we vote in, in the, um, motion?
I called him again today.
My point with Robin is that under chapter forty-eight, section five. Planning board has standing to petition the town council for a change in the zoning bylaw. Okay, so we do have standing to do that. If we petition them, they have fourteen days to send it back to us. And then we have, I think, what is it, a month, twenty-eight days, something? To, to hold a, a public hearing. Which we would hopefully do jointly with the, cause both the planning board and the, um, council have to hold hearings. So we could hold a joint hearing, that's, that's explicitly stated in section five. And, you know, just get it done. My thought was if, if, as, as a courtesy, we could pass it through the town manager, but we, we have standing to submit it. And I, I'm not sure what Jim, what's.
He hasn't answered me yet. Cause the question was, as you and I spoke.
So my question is, do we just wanna proceed with it or do we wanna?
Was, you know, are we supposed to send it? Because it, everything is really kind of up in the air and I'm trying to figure out a procedure that's proper. And it's either we, we give it to the town manager, who in turn gives it to the, um, the town council. Or can we, can you, as a planning board, give it to the town council directly? And if that's the case, how do we go about doing that? Do we send it to the, the president of the town council or do we send it? I, I don't understand it.
We, we said, things that go to the town council all have to go through Tom Florence. So you send it to Tom Florence?
Goes to the clerk of the council.
He's the clerk of the council.
Tom Florence said no, so.
It's in the charter.
Yeah, I'm.
It's in the charter.
But I mean, I'm. I'm, that's why I called town council to.
I think we should get.
Straighten it out, because I mean, I'm getting different.
Right. I, I, what I'm gonna suggest is that we, we petition the town council on the zoning changes that we've agreed on and see what happens.
But how do, where do I send it?
You send it to the town council through Tom Florence.
And he said no.
Do it anyway.
Send it, send, send it.
So send it anyway, to who?
To Tom, to Tom Florence and it, let him bounce it back.
Well, if it's written word that the town voted on and that was written, that that is where it goes, that's our own, that's our avenue.
It's not specific, that's the problem.
Well, let's do it and see what happens.
That, that, I guess that's our point is, with petition.
Yeah.
The council through the clerk, the council, the clerk of the council.
Let them come back and tell us it's wrong.
And then it's up to him.
Let them come back and say it's wrong.
Well, it's up to him to turn around and get it to the council members in the appropriate time.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that's part of the clerk's job as far as the clerk of the council.
That's right.
And I think, I think we should do it. I think these are simple little changes that should be done.
But, but, we're working on something really simple and then when we have something that's controversial.
When you say petition, what kind of format should that be then?
What I gave it to you.
Just what, just, just that?
The, 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 basically, uh, I don't know if you have it with you.
No, I, I don't, but I.
Basically, what, what I suggested was the format would be, the planning board of East Long Meadow petitions the town council of East Long Meadow to, um, make the following changes in the zoning bylaw and then spell out the changes that we agreed to.
Okay.
Okay? And when they get that, they've got fourteen days to send it back to us, okay? And then we have to hold a public hearing.
When does that fourteen days start, when Tom gives it to them?
I, I, it doesn't say specifically in section five. I would assume it means when they get it, they get it, whoever.
So it would be at their next meeting rather than when I submitted it to town?
I, I believe that's correct.
That would make more, the most sense.
That would make the most sense.
I think that's great and I think that's absolutely what we should do. Should we take a vote in order to petition them or is it just a consensus of the board?
Consensus is fine.
I mean, we already voted on the changes and, you know.
Okay. And sticking with that subject, um, I know the planning board would have to hold a public hearing. The town council has to hold a public hearing or you can hold a joint one.
Right.
I'm concerned with joint public hearings because my thought is the planning board should hold a public hearing, come up with a recommendation and make a recommendation to the council. Then they're gonna review it and either approve it or disapprove it. With both committees together, the council and the planning board, they have seven members, we have five. I'm afraid we won't actually get. Our vote is, um, the planning board through to them.
Okay.
And our vote, and our vote, and for all intensive purposes, is a unanimous recommendation for them.
It was, it doesn't have to be unanimous.
Doesn't have to be unanimous.
But it would be a recommendation.
Right.
And then it's, then it really goes to them, just like it would normally go to town meeting. We may recommend something, there's been plenty of times that.
Didn't work out.
It didn't work out.
And so the planning, out of the planning board's budget would be the notices and the public hearing?
Yes, for this particular one.
And it would actually, even if it's a joint, we would still have to.